All right, good point. All right, good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee the whole meeting for Wednesday, February 15th. We're flying along. I'll say this in our communications, but since we're going to moment of silence, let's make sure we're safe out there tomorrow, winter storm morning. So I'll say more, but let's pause for whatever you need to think about. Thank you, everyone. Alderman Ortiz, if you'd please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Mr. Crump, please call the rule. Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Grup.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin. And Ortiz.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone. As we begin the City Council Committee the whole meeting, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and any who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind you're sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters, anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but please ask as you share your opinions, we all have the same respect for or common desire to share and to make Davenport a better place for everyone, especially for the folks in here. Just a reminder, if you have a phone, please put it on silent or shut it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council on any particular item, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you. Love to know your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body and not to any one individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator, Ms. Spiegel, anything for us tonight?
Just a reminder that most city facilities will be closed Monday in observation of President's Day.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we'll go to a whole bunch of public hearings now, all under Public Works. So Alderman Dunn, Alderman Kelly, please. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the first public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 36th Street Pacific Street to North Division Street reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East Locust Street and Eastern Avenue intersection reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Please step to the lectern and name and word, please.
Good evening. My name's Dale Gilmore. I apologize that I didn't read the green sheet on this, so this may have been addressed. But if we're going to put new signals in for the east and westbound locusts, when they have a green light, can we put a yellow flashing arrow? It would sure speed up traffic in that intersection. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East Central Park Brady Street to Pershing Avenue reconstruction and Fardham Street intersection resurfacing project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the fourth public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Carriage Hill Drive reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the fifth public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 11th Street and Warren Street Storm Sewer Improvement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the sixth public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Tremont Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the seventh public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Fairmount Community Center project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and I'll open the eighth and final public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Wayland Park Walking Trail project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and we're back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, Alderman Kelly. Next area is petition communications. I just want to draw attention. I'm sure most people are paying attention, but winter storm warning for tonight and tomorrow, warning's a big deal, so please pay attention. If you are on a snow route, please take your car off during. We are also in a snow emergency, so when a snow emergency is announced in the city of Davenport, and it's already been announced from eight tonight till eight in the morning Friday, and a snow, a winter storm warning, if you're on a snow route, you can be tickered or towed if you have a car on a snow route. So winter storm warning, snow emergency, big deal. Mother Nace is in charge. She's been quiet for a little bit. She's letting us know she's awake now. So I just want to draw attention as best I can to the snow routes, so our folks can do their job and get, keep those emergency routes open. So I see Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to let everyone know that there will be a, the third board meeting, which would be Monday night, but again, I've run up against the early Monday holidays, certain Monday holidays early in the year. So it'll be Tuesday night, February 21st, here at City Hall, right here in the chambers. We're going to be talking about, there's lots of interesting things going on in Des Moines. There's lots of conversation about what, how that will impact residents in the city in terms of taxes and how we pay for all of our, for staff services and everything we do for the city. So I'll be kind of going through that on Monday, on Tuesday night, and also we'll have a little refresher on where your property taxes actually go and who they go to, because it's not just the city who's impacted by all of this. So, and we'll also be talking a little bit about the Citizens Academy that's coming up, a chance to join that, and anything anybody has on their mind. So that's at 6:30 on Tuesday night, and I hope to see you here. One other thing, I wanted to talk about an exhibit coming up, opening. It's open at the Figgy now. It's a fantastic, unusual exhibit. It's called Sporting Fashion Outdoor Girls 1800 to 1960. And if you don't believe the old thing that a woman can do everything a man too but wearing high heels, you need to go see this exhibit. If you love antique fashion, if you love sewing, if you love beautiful work, you need to go see this exhibit. There's plenty of times, there's plenty of opportunities, there's lots of events, there's free opportunities to go and see it on Thursday nights, I think it's the third Thursday of the month, but it's a great exhibit. It's on until June, lots of fun, and please try to take it in. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Cornet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank staff for their presentation last night and working out the budget problems for the 1.7 million deficit. You guys, you know, no jobs are lost and everybody's happy. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Alderman Cornet. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to build on what Alderwoman McGinnis said about the Davenport University Citizens Academy applications. The applications are open through February 24th, davenportiowa.com/citizensacademy. And I've heard nothing but wonderful, wonderful things about the academy, so I'd like to encourage everyone to go. And I also want to build on Alderman Cornet. I really appreciate all the help with helping me understand what I feel was a complicated situation and answering my questions, and I feel very comfortable with what city staff has done and where we're going and how you've taken care of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to let everybody know, February 23rd, at the Eastern Avenue Library, I will be having a ward meeting. Sorry it's out of my ward, but I've been trying to find the location, and that just fell into my lap, thanks to Lee and Cornet. So I'm happy to say that we'll be back on track next month in the fifth ward, but as of right now, we'll be at the Eastern Avenue Library, 5:30 on the 23rd, and everybody's welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to the four areas of discussion for the community the whole meeting. First one is community development, then we have public safety, public works, and finance. So community development, Alderman Grup and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Grup, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three items up for discussion on community development this evening. Item number one is a third consideration, ordinance for case REZ 22-08 being the request of Ecumenical Housing Development Group to rezone 1112 Bridge Avenue from R4C Single Family and Two-Family Central Residential District to RMF Multi-Family Residential District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this agenda item? Please state your name and address or ward, please. You have five minutes.
Ron Swinter, Davenport Rockdale in a tunnel. All I can say is wow. We have a bidding process that is a point system that was circumceded with distortion wise, however you want to call it, misrepresentation. Now they come before the council and want to correct it so we could have it here. How's that fair to the other organizations that bid for this money? I know a lot of you don't want to hear me talking here. I've worked for nonprofits. I know what this means for the community, but for a council to say eh, or hey, this could be the lesser of two evils, there could be something else that goes in there, it's just wrong. This is not morally, ethically, or right. You know? We as a group of people here in the city have to follow rules, regulations when you get bids. That raises a question. If it's all right for this, is it going to be all right for that or something else? That's called transparency in government. That shows the true nature of government. If this is okay, then I'm sad to say Davenport's going downhill. This is not right. It should not be voted. There should not be any amendments trying to persuade these people that have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in their community because they followed the code. And now one comes in, eh, it's just one. Eh, we didn't know about it, and then for have that organization to say, yeah, we knew about it. How's that trust in government when someone can outright lie about it? And this council's going to bend over backwards to allow it to happen and basically screw the other people who bid on this projects, their own projects? It's a point system. Take it away, if they get it, great, I'm more for it. I have no issue with it. But when you allow any organization as a city to say, it's okay, you cheated, we got no problem with that. How is that making us transparent and open government when we're allowing someone to do this to the state and local taxpayers who pay into this fund? Or are a part of it? Why is this right, folks? Our morals and values are better than this in Davenport? I was raised in Davenport. Davenport is my home. This is not something I expect from a city, a council, or anybody to say this is okay. We push here, as the mayor says, open, honest, you talk to everybody. I've had hundreds of people talk to me. What's going on? I'm like, it doesn't make sense. It's not right. And if we as a council say, no big deal, well, guess what? Davenport's flushing down the toilet. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, we'll move to council comments. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Grup. I'd like to set some record straight here. I, first of all, though, want to thank the neighbors, Ecumenical Housing, people involved in this process. You know, I'm a neighborhood person. I live in an older neighborhood. I put my blood, sweat, and tears and money in one. I understand the challenges that can happen in and around those neighborhoods, and I certainly appreciate everything the neighbors have concerns about in this process. This was a very thorough process. They came to the table with Ecumenical Housing and resolved this issue. They hopefully have a compromise that will work. I do want to be, I want to make something very, very clear. I kind of feel like that from this room, that Ecumenical Housing is being accused of, well, it's been said that they're liars, cheaters, et cetera. Language that, by the way, was not used in any of the discussions I had with neighbors. That was not where they were coming from. They had concerns, they understood the process. This was a process of applying for a grant that required documentation, which Ecumenical Housing had. It said that they understood that the property was not, I've seen it, it said that they understood the property was not zoned properly, that it would need, require rezoning. There was no lying there. There was no cheating there in the application. It, staff signed a report that said, yes, it needs, it would need to be rezoned, that it would be supported by staff. That doesn't mean that the city council would necessarily vote for that. So there was no lying or cheating in any way in this process by these people, by either Ecumenical Housing, and this was not the attitude that the neighbors, who are actually impacted by this, had toward this. And I appreciate everybody's professionalism, listening, their passion for this, certainly. And I just want to say that, and I just wanted to clear that point up. There was no lying, there was no cheating. It was a good, clean application. So everything was above board. Everything was transparent. So thank you very much, Your Honor.
Any other comments from the council? I'll just say one more thing before we move on, and because we've had this on discussion for the last five, two cycles, we'll continue to have this on discussion for next week. This is a land use, it's a rezoning, it's a question of land use, and as we've evaluated this case, we have not evaluated it based on whether the applicant receives a grant or not. That is not what we're deciding here. We're deciding whether or not this is appropriate land use for the parcel in question, and that's where the discussion has been, and it's been a good discussion. And I think we've gotten to a point where we have something that the neighborhood can agree to and the developer can agree to, and we all move forward with the rezoning of the parcel with those conditions. So that is the best possible outcome, when we can get two groups who disagree with each other to come together and come to an agreement to move forward. So I view it as a net positive, even though sometimes that process is painful. Let's move on to item number two, which is a resolution approving the 2023 Urban Revitalization Tax Exemption URTE Projects. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
I will. I will have to be abstaining from four items. I've given that list to the clerk, so I'll be abstaining when I do the vote on those next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the State of Iowa Community Attraction and Tourism Grant Agreement for the Martin Luther King Jr. Plaza Project and authorizing the city administrator or designee to sign necessary documents and agreements. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Just make note, this is a great project. I'm excited that they received the CAT grant from the State of Iowa, and this is just the next step in moving this forward, and we should see some movement on this project here in the spring, which will be great for the Hilltop and the downtown and the Martin Luther King Jr. Center. And with that, I would ask Alderwoman Lee to please set our community development agenda.
Thank you very much, Chair. I move that item one be put on the discussion agenda and items two and three be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that concludes community development. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Grup and Alderwoman Lee. Next area is public safety. Alderwoman Dickman and whoever she designates will work with her to set the agenda, probably. So we'll see. Alderwoman Dickman, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. First is a third consideration of ordinance amending Schedule 14 of Intersection Traffic Signals of Chapter 10.96 Entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding three intersections thereto. Is there any public with comment?
Counsel?
All right, that item will be placed on consent. The next item is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule 12, or sorry, seven, No Parking, of Chapter 10.96 Entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Fairmount Street along the east side from Locust Street to Garfield Street thereto. Any public with comment? Counsel? Alderman Cornet?
I'm very impressed with your ability to read Roman numerals.
Thank you.
Hey, grade school did me some good, turns out. All right, item number three is a resolution approving street lane or public ground closure requests for the listed dates and times. I'll read the list here. Davenport Community School District High School Track Meets Brady Street Stadium, 3603 Brady Street, 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Tuesday, April 4th, 2023; Thursday, April 6th, 2023; Thursday, April 13th, 2023; and Monday, April 17th, 2023. Closure, 36th Street from Brady Street to west of Davenport Avenue. Then there's the Corn Belt Running Club, BICS, at six training runs, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Thursday, June 22nd, 2023; Thursday, June 29th, 2023; Thursday, July 6th, 2023; and Thursday, July 13th, 2023. Closures are East 4th Street from Pershing Avenue to River Drive; Pershing Avenue from East 4th Street to Kirkwood Boulevard; Kirkwood Boulevard from Pershing Avenue to Jersey Ridge Road; Jersey Ridge Road from Kirkwood Boulevard to Middle Road; Middle Road from Jersey Ridge Road to McClellan Boulevard; McClellan Boulevard from Middle Road to River Drive. Then there's the Corn Belt Running Club, Genesis Sports Medicine, Brady Street Sprints, 5:30 PM to 9:30, or sorry, to 9:00 PM, Thursday, July 27th, 2023. Closure from Brady Street from Fifth Street to 11th Street. Any comments from the public? Counsel? That item will move on. And then there's motion, number four is motion approving noise variance requests for the listed date and time for an outdoor event. The Damview Inn, St. Patrick's Day Party, 4:10, East 2nd Street, 8:00 AM, Saturday, March 18th, 2023; to 12:00 AM, Sunday, March 19th, 2023. Outdoor music band, over 50 DBA. Any public with comment? Counsel? All right, that item will move on. And then motion five, approving beer and liquor license applications. A, new license, new owner temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer. There's La Finca LLC, 916 West 2nd Street, license update, license type C-Class Liquor. Oh So Sweet by Tiffany, 210 East 2nd Street, new license type, license type C Liquor. Staybridge Suites, 4729 Progress Drive, new license owner, license type C Liquor. Supermarket, 6723 Northwest Boulevard, new license slash owner license types, or Class E Liquor. And then we have our annual licenses that are noted on the agenda. Any public with comment? Counsel? I would request an alderman to make a motion.
I am, sir. Move.
There's a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion that all items replaced, like I said.
There's been a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, with that, back to you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. The next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will lead the discussion. Alderman Dunn, good luck reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. Looks like we have a fairly light schedule this evening, so I'll get right after it. Item number one is a first consideration of an ordinance amending Section 13.16.109, entitled Fees of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, to allow fees to be set by resolution of the City of Davenport Council for compost tipping, water pollution control plant hauled waste, water pollution control plant permits for hauled waste, and the sale of compost goods. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 36th Street Pacific Street to North Division Street reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East Locust Street and Eastern Avenue intersection reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East Central Park Brady Street to Pershing Avenue reconstruction and Fardham Street East Central Park Avenue intersection overlay project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderman Grup.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that staff had taken Mr. Gilmore's question down to evaluate the yellow left turn. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Carriage Hill Drive reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 11th Street and Warren Street Storm Sewer Improvement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Tremont Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Fairmount Community Center project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item? Alderman Cornet.
Thank you, sir. I I just have a problem with the overrun cost on this item. It's Fairmont area deserves the community center, but the price we're paying, I think, is a little much. And the design that was presented was really ugly. I mean, we could do better than that with the design for this building to be sitting out in front of our libraries. This should be aesthetically pleasing to everybody that goes there. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cornet. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Wayland Park Trail project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. And again, I just want to thank Director Dyson for this Wayland Park Trail project. This park has really needed some help, and there weren't many sidewalks in that area, but there's a lot of folks. So this will help give people a place to walk. It'll give people a place to run, give the kids a place to play, walk their baby carriages. So I'm really excited about this, and I just wanted to thank you publicly.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution awarding a contract for the 2023 pedestrian curb ramp retrofit program to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities of Moley, Illinois, and amount $311,163.50. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is the resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of asphalt oils for the 2023 construction season due by tuminous material in supply of Des Moines, Illinois, or Des Moines, Iowa, excuse me. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a resolution awarding a contract for the CDBG Alley Program, 301 Kirkwood Boulevard to 330 East 15th Street Alley Reconstruction Project, AmeriConstruction Group, in the amount of $157,318.30. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 13 is a resolution adopting the Iowa State Urban Design Standards for Public Improvements, the Iowa Statewide Urban Standard specification for public improvements, and the City of Davenport Supplemental Specifications Manual. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderwoman Lee?
Again, I just have a question on this one. Are we going to include the temporary bike paths in the SUE DEPS here? Because I understand that you're working on it. And I just want to know if that's what we're voting on.
So Alderman Lee, per Brian's comment, sorry, Nicole Gleason, Public Works, per Brian's comment yesterday, generally temporary things are not included. It's as dictated by the city engineer during a construction project, but I can confirm that with him. He's, I believe, at a board meeting in your neighborhood tonight.
He is. Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 14 is a resolution adopting the renewal of a 20-year land lease agreement at the Davenport Municipal Airport with the Iowa National Guard for the term March 1, 2023 through February 28, 2043. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a RACE Grant Program Application to the United States Department of Transportation for financial assistance with enhancing and improving transportation access through the flood mitigation efforts and infrastructure improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And then I'll read items number 16 through 23, and then ask for public with comment. Item number 16 is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number 17 is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number 18 is a resolution assessing the cost of condemned property demolitions at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number 19 is a resolution assessing the cost of sidewalk repairs at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number 20 is a resolution assessing the cost of tree removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number 21, a resolution assessing the cost of weed cutting at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number 22, resolution assessing the cost for improvement projects for businesses participating in the Downtown Streetscape Program at various lots and tracks of real estate. And item number 323, a resolution assessing the cost of stream bank stabilization projects at various lots and tracks of real estate. So is there anyone from the public wishing to address any of them items? Counsel? Seeing none, these items move on. And finally, item number 24 is a motion approving the Title VI Program for the City of Davenport Transit Division. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, that item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Thank you, sir. First and foremost, I'm glad you had to read all that. And not me. And I would like to make a motion to move all 24 items to consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda is set. Public Works is complete. And back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The next area is Finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have five items on Finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution setting a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 operating budget, fiscal year 2024 capital improvement budget, and the fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2029 capital improvement program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one? Counsel? Item number one will move on. Item number two is a resolution adopting the calendar year 2023 city administrator's work plan. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? Counsel? Number two will move on as well. Item number three is a resolution establishing the interest rate for special assessments. Anyone from the public wishing to address number three? Counsel? That will move on. Item number four is a motion approving the renewal of excess flood insurance for policy period February 12, 2023 to February 12, 2024 with Trishura Specialty Insurance Company in the amount of $86,476.20. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address number four? Counsel? And finally, item number five is a motion approving the renewal of active shooter and malicious attack insurance coverage for the policy period February 10, 2023 to February 10, 2024 with underwriters of Lloyd's London in the amount of $52,689.68. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number five? Counsel? Below on our agenda, we have our purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. We don't read each of those individually, but they're listed there for your information. Alderman Cornet, would you please set our agenda?
I move that all items be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that concludes Finance. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. Next area is other, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for tonight. The next area is Public of Business. Anybody who'd like to talk to the council other than what was on the agenda, please come to the podium. You'll have five minutes. You know the rules. Thank you.
My name is Dale Gilmore. I was sixth ward. It's very short tonight. I was at a fourth ward meeting Monday night, and we got to talking about tradition. And I ran across an ad, I'd like to say I wrote this, but I didn't. And it's only about five sentences. So I'm going to read it twice. First time, just listen. Second time, think about it. It says, "Tradition is good. Tradition helps us become who we are and who we're going to be. But tradition holds us back. To get ahead, you have to try something new, something better, something different. It's time to try something you've never tried before, to do what you've always done, to not do what you've always done, beginning right now." So I'm going to read that for a second time. Just listen to it. Tradition is good. Tradition helps us become who we are and who we're going to be. But tradition holds us back. To get ahead, you have to try something new, something better, something different. It's time to try something you've never tried before, to not do what you've always done, beginning right now. Thank you.
Thank you. In view of tradition, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, any other reports, Ms. Spiegel? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Hi, Stephanie Rittmer, Third Ward. And I came to talk about the dog park. Not on the agenda, but I was just recently involved with the Ad-Hoc Committee for the DOLA Standards, a dog off-leash area. Great working with Parks and Rec. Everything's going nice and smooth. Last month, you all were talking about the RagBri route, and I don't know if it has been decided yet for the ending dipping site. But many, was it six times already, I believe, RagBri's ended here? And they go by our dog park, and they dip at the boat ramp there. So I'm getting to, it would be great if you all would think of us and remember us when it comes to the river improvement fund and the budget, and hopefully you'll, we need some of our agility equipment that when they removed it, it disappeared years ago. And also currently, right now, with all the rains and the crazy weather we've been having this year, there's mud and straw issues, and we're getting past that. But it seems that the last, there was a couple of attempts. There was one with sod and one with seed. But it happened to be before all the, or I'm sorry, after the rains had passed and everything dried up, getting to the beautification of our nice little drive as they go by to dip their tires, and they're going to pass that dog park. And can you all hopefully budget in something for grass, greenery? We're working with the Parks and Rec now and with Billy and grounds and everything. And hopefully, this will get done prior to rains, so everything doesn't dry out. And I know there's a manpower issue, and there's money, and all that jazz. We are currently, there's a bunch of us that are working to start a nonprofit and get a bunch of volunteers together so we can take care of the grounds, pick up the poo, and do those kind of things. But so just don't forget us when you're thinking about the river improvement fund, because that's kind of river territory in Centennial Park. And also with RagBri, and we do have a lot of out-of-towners that travel through, and we occasionally ask questions. And some of them actually, oh, we saw this dog park in our Google Maps. We were looking for a park, and we specifically came to this one in our travels. And then, of course, college and this and that. So it is used year-round. Don't forget us. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Be safe. Shovel. Shovel your sidewalks.